You ready, just now?
Right now.
Right now.
Right now.
I'd like to follow the first word of 13th, 2012 work sessions for planning board committees order. Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Here. All present in the chamber, thank you for being here today. Uh, we'll get into our agenda. The first item is citizen comments. And we have a little policy. So, according to our ordinance, that is to, I request any citizen, all citizens can address the commission. But try to keep your comments to five minutes. Then at that point, if the commission desires to enter a conversation with people, perhaps it's done. Otherwise, then we want the decision to be considered later or something else. So, when you come to speak, would you please identify yourself? Okay, first, the other hand right here. So, would you please, uh, you know, I think we need to put a chair. And you have this mic, if you don't mind, or whatever.
I don't mind.
Oh, that's close to it. Here we are.
Give me hugs at the end if you want. Oh, thank you for having me. My name's Natalie Wilpersen. I live on Ann Street in downtown Frankfurt, and I'm here on behalf of the downtown business and property owners, and just wanted to ask you all, with the considerations in regard to the St. Clair parking structure, that the issue is a huge issue, and everybody in the downtown community feels that parking is an issue and needs to be studied, and we would like for you all to consider bringing in a professional parking consultant to study both on-street and off-street parking issues, and to have, just to have that expert analysis of our, the situation downtown, and to make recommendations regarding the garage and on-street parking, from enforcement to location, all that kind of stuff, before you all move forward with the parking garage decision, so that your decisions may be informed by the right people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be discussing this, I'll say on our agenda a little later, so, need to come, it can be made, but I would like to hold it, not get into a real long discussion, because we want to have that discussed later. Mr. Turner?
And I just want to point out that Ms. Wilpersen did forward me some information on parking consultants. I emailed that out to you all, but when I sent it, it didn't go with the attachments, so, once this meeting is over, I'll make sure that the attachments are in everybody's hands, so that you guys can review it as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens coming?
Oh, I'll be there.
Any other citizens coming? Okay?
I'm Charlotte Nelson, and I just have one comment. I think that the Public Works Jeff Hackmark and his department needs to be committed on the swift and easy distribution of the cans to the residents around. I know that they had a lot of changing sizes later on. That wasn't their fault, it was commission's fault. The public doesn't read their options. I'm afraid that come July, when the billing is sent out for the next collection period, it's going to be just as confusing, so there'll be more calls, and I find that sending out a bill for those who have the small cans, a $5 a month, it's almost like, let's see, it's going to cost us X amount to send it out, if we don't pay the $5, we're going to collect 1%. Well, I probably could survive even as tight as I am paying that 1% for the rest of my life, and that reached the $5, doubled it up. I think that needs to be looked at, possibly forgetting the whole $5 for everybody for July, if, or the money that we need, but this confusion for the public on the garbage cans is bad enough. It's, as I said, it's our fault, because we don't read and, and listen, even the brochure sent with the garbage cans, I have friends that, you know, didn't send in the request, et cetera, et cetera. But again, the initiation and the distribution was handled nicely, and I applaud Jeff and his group for that, and I hope you all will look, and change the subject a little bit in this parking situation. We're a funny community. We didn't park in that garage when we had it before, whether or not we will use it, so hopefully that maybe a study will be made and see what the utilization is, even at the Sullivan parking garage is now. I know the city uses a great many of the spaces. I can understand the Grand Theater are interested in parking space for the events in the evening, but I think that there's enough in the Sullivan garage. Yes, it is a two-block walk from there to the Grand Theater, but possibly we can manage that without spending several million dollars for a garage that perhaps will be underutilized. And a study seeing that utilization possibilities would be, I think, important. And lastly, the parking spaces on St. Clair, Claire Marrow, I think possibly the recent thing with the fire down there might have been a sort of a test, I don't know how it was handled, but I think it makes pretty tight quarters for a major fire in that area, for a truck with ladders to service the people that are living down there, and quarters like that, so. And it's also a very nice-looking view down there to the Capitol, and it's distracting if you go down there and look and see a lot of cars out there. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you just move on?
If I could, I share, I share Ms. Nelson's commendation of our Public Works Department. I know that this has been a big transition into the new garbage system, and I think our staff have handled it, have ended it with a lot of grace. Just to clear up one potential point of confusion I do hear about, the next bill that gets sent out in July will include a $5 charge for the month of January for everybody, and then every month thereafter will reflect the new pay rate, which will replace the old $5 charge. So in other words, if you have the small can, it'll be billed $5 for January and $0 for every month thereafter. If you have the medium cart, it'll be $5 for January and $4 a month for every month thereafter. I just wanted to get that out there, because I think there's a lot of folks who think that the new pay rate rates are in addition to the old, are in addition to the old $5 a month, sorry.
Any other citizens?
My name's Galbert Roberts. Owns property 1315 Louisville Road. On that property, there are seven apartments, two single-family residences. Those apartments are located roughly 800 feet off Louisville Road. It seems to be reasonable that someone would have to take a 64, or two 64 containers all the way up to Louisville Road for pickup, and particularly in inclement weather. Now, if they in fact do that, we have a container sitting out there on Louisville Road where the truck has to stop on Four Lane Highway in 40, 45 mile an hour traffic to pick up this garbage, causing this traffic hazard. And with the containers sitting out there after they've been picked up, there's already a problem with theft, had to disappear off my property already. I'd like to have some sort of variance allowing the truck to come back on my property, to pick the garbage up back there, eliminating the traffic hazard, eliminating the theft of the containers, and making life a bit more reasonable for people that live there.
Okay, can you, Mr. Lawrence? Have you got his names on that?
I certainly did. I was trying to ask him about his time to the property.
It has been. And we would be, staff, somebody looking to this, see if we can...
If you could leave your phone or contact number or something, write that down for us, we'd be able to follow up.
Sure you will.
Thank you.
We've had goosebumps. And dealing with garbage pickup in the past, we've had similar requests for pickup in trailer park neighborhoods, so this should be pretty doable if, if you're able to grant the city amusement onto the property. That's, that was a solution that was, this has been in other properties.
I think that would not be a problem at all.
Well, Mr. Hackmark, would you like to come up and make comments? Do you know Mr. Hackmark?
We know him.
He's in charge of all of the public's, it works.
The provision in the ordinance that prohibits from servicing that lot, there's over eight units on that lot, and in our ordinance, we can only pick up later on. So, there's no waiver to pick him up in our ordinance. Even with the liability issue, even if we were to grant a waiver, he's over eight.
Are we picking him up now?
Mr. Turner? No. Commissioner Haddon?
He has three buildings on your property, is that correct? One?
I have four buildings. I have a five place, a dual place, and then two single families. Now, the single family address is 1325 and 1327 Louisville Road.
So, the ordinance says the city shall not collect waste from apartment or condominium buildings with more than eight units, where he has multiple buildings that are less than eight.
There's more than eight units on that lot?
Mm-hmm.
So...
What she's saying is the ordinance doesn't say lot.
Mr. Turner?
Oh, I'm sorry. What she's saying is the ordinance doesn't say lot, it states building, how many units in the building. And so in this one, we have actually less than eight in the building. Does that make, does that, are we reading it wrong?
Right, A1 says due to traffic hazards, the city shall not collect waste from apartment or condominium buildings with more than eight units. So it specifically states apartment or condominium buildings. At this point, it's my understanding that Public Works is, as you say, just to say where you have apartment complex that may have four or five individual buildings with a number of apartments or condominium units in each building, in that case, because you've got a complex, then the city is not providing garbage pickup. And I don't know that the city has provided garbage pickup for those that... Yes, we've served this complex in the past. The difference is, now that we have garbage cans and a recycling can for each unit, so if you had a unit, you have 16 cans on Louisville Road, which is a very busy road, where before, I don't know what the number of cans were on the road before this program started, but it must not have been an issue that they have that many containers that we were serving.
I've got a couple of questions. The, are there, I don't even know how big the difference is, but are there more than eight units that share any frads?
No.
They have separate, they have separate addresses?
Although the buildings are on the same property, though in fact, it's three different addresses.
Would it, because I guess I read the ordinance, read the ordinance the same way commissioners, head and intern are reading it. If the, it sounds like, it sounds like both our Public Works Director and yourself are expressing a safety concern instead of picking up the containers on the local road, could that concern, could that concern be addressed?
If you read the ordinance, over eight units per lot or over eight buildings per lot, I guess we were always in the mentality of units on lot. This property was probably developed prior to planning and zoning, so you have kind of a different situation, two residential houses, and two apartment complexes, which you have probably a non-unit on the lot. That's per the dose code.
The question I'm asking is that the intent of this particular element of the ordinance is for traffic safety, really? Can that concern be, could that concern be mitigated? Is there a way to pick up the garbage at this, this property?
There's a provision in the ordinance that allows us to go onto private property if the owner signs a waiver of liability, so that's one option, and I guess if the interpretation of a number of units or buildings is, then yes.
Would that satisfy your safety concern? I mean, if the intent of this is to, is to be safe, if it's to be safe, I don't see a problem.
The intent is to save the guys.
But would, would that, would that waiver satisfy your concern, in terms of safety?
I'd have to, I'd like to go out and see, you know, maybe, maybe in on-site and kind of see where we can turn around and look at the site, our big trucks getting back. Problem is, you can get a big truck like that back on a, almost like a driveway, and if it's wet, and the road isn't, we could damage the road if it drives from wet conditions, and so, I would assume the liability waiver would relieve the city of repairing the gravel, just for that clarification, and then try to get a place where we can turn around.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, could you, if you have any work with Mr. Hackmark and others, concerns here, and the commission has certainly existed, so if you'd come back with us, whatever you think is best.
Might decide to visit?
I've been out to the property.
And you, I guess you haven't been receiving garbage service?
I'm sorry.
I guess you haven't been receiving garbage service for two weeks, is that?
Well, yes, we have, out on Louisville Road.
Okay. Has any of this gone? Your, your trash is still getting picked up?
Well, what they're getting out there, they're implying not to pull a 64-gallon container all the way up to Louisville.
What did they do in the past?
Well, in the past, they, you know, they've had the 32-gallon containers that they use occasionally, but most of the time, they just put garbage bags out there. Just throw in the bag with a truck and we go.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
All right, any other citizens coming?
My name's Chris Miller. I'm a property owner downtown. I live downtown, and I have a business downtown on St. Clair, and it's called Louisville. Just wanted to kind of give my opinion on it to you all, to give you some information to hopefully help you make decisions about parking downtown, before you go into closed session and start making decisions. First of all, I think we can all agree that having a revitalized downtown Frankfurt is good for the whole county as far as economic development, and we bring potential people into Franklin County to show a really vibrant downtown where they can pick their families, go movie, go out to eat, that's an important prospect. In the past, it's been a little bit dilapidated, but I think we're right on the cusp of really bringing downtown to be something we can really be proud of. I'm excited about that, that's why I'm here, that's why I opened a business downtown. That's why we brought Louisville from another state and moved here, because we want to be part of revitalizing downtown Frankfurt. So, with that being said, every day, we have customers that drive from all over the United States to come to Frankfurt to shop in our store, because it's a unique little store. Whereas the parking is, it's very, very difficult. As a business owner downtown who has retail customers coming, the parking is a very difficult situation right now. I know some people will say it's a perceived parking problem, whatever, I'm not an expert, I don't do studies, but there's definitely a parking problem downtown Frankfurt for retail business establishments. That's a fact. That's what my customers say, and that's who I listen to. So, keep that in mind when you're making your decisions. Yes, there's a garage over there, we used to park in it, we park in it every day, we have a monthly pass, we park in it, it's functional right now. But there definitely, if you take into account what's going to come with the parking garage, with the new judicial center, and with all the empty spaces that we hope to fill with people living downtown, we want to bring some more businesses downtown. We want it to be a unique place with unique shops, not just, you know, chain shops and things like that. There's got to be a solution that's going to be a long-term solution. We have to have a vision for it, we need to figure out where we're going with all this. I think that, I wasn't, I was asked some questions about whether or not we want a parallel parking on St. Clair. I mean, like, as a business owner, any parking on St. Clair would be great. I'm not an engineer, I don't study these things, I don't know the big answer to it all, I just know any more parking. So I don't, I don't know whatever happened with that, now all of a sudden, we're talking about what we're going to do with the garage, I hear they're going to talk about maybe tearing it down, or maybe somebody's going to buy it and revitalize it. I just want you all to really get some stakeholders that have retail businesses downtown involved before we make these final decisions. And I'm happy to address you further if anybody asks questions, but I've been helping the past to some other folks, and I haven't had anybody come to me and say, hey, what do you think? I had one person come to me and ask what I thought, but it was a very short question, do you want to put parking on St. Clair? I'm like, well, that's better than nothing, better than what we have right now. But that's all. I just want you guys to, I'd like to know, or be involved, and know what's going on before there's this final decision made, and all of a sudden, oh, guess what's happening now? That's all.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Citizens coming? All right, we should move on. We're now into a discussion of decisions agenda.
Is the agenda been drafted, or has changes or additions?
Which one, which commission? I guess not? Okay, when you go now.
Pardon, pardon.
I'd like permission to, uh...
We've got a small National Recreation Park Association grant for archery training, we're going to set an order for staff members, too, and there's no match, so we can get it on the agenda, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask if we could get it on the agenda. Turn anything up? Mr. Hackmark?
Just as a clarification of the ordinance, it defines residential units in the ordinance, which I don't see the interpretation, we can serve over eight units per lot.
This, when you look at the definition of residential unit, it does say private residences or households, apartments, churches, schools, and municipal buildings with eight dwelling units or less on one lot of record.
I don't have the authority to change it.
I understand, yeah. So, you'll, you'll be doing it.
Can, both of you, Lawrence? I think there is a certain desire, I want the commission to make some type of commendation here, so can you, if we need to do something for it, can you let us...
Yes, I think, I think we need to, I think, hardening some of the fact that if we deviate from the ordinance we're setting resident, and that future requests, probably of course the commission, we, we, I would look to the departments to make recommendations, and since we may, we're planning to meet February 20, I understand, could we make recommendations for that time?
To be clear, I mean, I agree we shouldn't deviate from the ordinance, but I think we all agree with Haskins that it would need to be monitored and adjusted, if this was what we made of the call.
I do have some personnel actions that weren't quite ready, that will be added to the agenda if there's not an objection, and I guess I need to ask if I need to do this every month, because very typically, things are still in the pipeline, and the deadline for the draft agenda comes out, and they come together, you know, drug screens, where it takes a few days to get a response back from the testing vendor, interview teams that have selected a candidate, have not done everything that we need to before we put their name out there, and so, I guess I'm just kind of asking for, do I need to come up and do this every month, or can I kind of work under the assumption that you guys will understand that personnel things take, they process over time, and they're not always going to be ready Thursday before, the second Tuesday, but they very well may be ready and need to be approved to move forward with on that fourth Tuesday of the month, or else they have to wait for another month. And so, you know, we try to work delicately with people and not put their name on the agenda until they're ready for their employer to know, so we're kind of doing a little dance, like I said, just kind of make, trying to get a feel for if we can work under the understanding that we'll act, that I'll put as much on there as I can by the draft agenda date, but there may be other personnel actions. And the department heads, I would be glad to explain if, if an explanation is needed for it.
Can you send me some of this? If you don't mind, just give us a little email or something, so it gets our heads up.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Anything else? I think then...
Then go next to the cinematic report and stay up comments.
Let's start with staff reports. Chris Miller, and Ron Burke, Steve Willhite. Mr. Hackmark, anything else to report?
I'll just report on the trash cans. We have, I think, all the 20 of the changeouts done, so we're pretty well, got that under control, starting tomorrow. All the written notices that were, were violations of garbage, and COVID enforcement will begin tomorrow, so that's kind of what I've paid on our garbage.
Can Mr. Wilder?
I was going to ask this under, under old business, or, I was going to ask a couple of questions about, about that under old business, is there an objection?
This is, this is my, oh, of course, nothing would do that, okay?
Okay. Jim, any further report?
No, of course.
Mr. Dawson, chief? Mr. Dawson, you have anything to report tonight?
Do you have to talk about that website?
Yes, please, please, please come up here, please.
Last Thursday, or Friday, I sat down with Charlene, the C manager, and we discussed about the website, and it looks like Charlene said she'll be ready to show the website on the 20th of February. I think she's just clicking the pages, but I don't know if you need to be... she's clicking the, uh, the pages and how, but I don't know if, uh, you need to be, uh, to meet with her and see if it needs to be discussed before we can make a presentation.
No, I think the last meeting we talked to her, when, when she came up and said she'd be ready to set this up and say, show us what you got.
Okay. So, I guess on the next, uh, website, I do, uh, see, uh, we are going to set up a project.